I call a June 3rd agenda briefing meeting to order. Indication, Commissioner Kim Harrell. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Chris Gurley. Approval of the minutes. For May 20th, 2025. Discussion, adjustments of agenda.
We do have one adjustment, Madam Chair. It's for the Health Department, a budget amendment number 440. And she'll go over it when she goes over the budget amendments.
Thank you. Special presentations. Presentation of Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan for 2025, JCPC Chairman Dustin Hitman.
So he's gonna be here.
You can remind him. Okay. Motion to approve 2025 Men's Health Week in Wayne County is presented by Vice Chairman Devin Foster. Appointments Committee.
Yeah, well, it looks like we've got a bunch of appointments. And in addition to that, we're going to make a recommendation to reappoint Barbara Acock to the jury commission.
Okay.
We were gonna ask you, but we forgot it.
You said your memory was bad. That's fine. Okay. Motion to appoint Greg Harris, the Fire Commissioner for Little River Volunteer Fire Department. Motion to appoint Paul Louis Daw as the Fire Commissioner for Tate Towns Service District. Motion to appoint Melissa Kilpatrick for Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. Motion to reappoint Michael Dawson to the Wayne County ABC Board. Motion to reappoint Matthew Hardison to the Wayne County ABC Board. Any questions on that? Harrison, okay.
If I would point out that we are voting on the ABC Board reappointments today rather than a recommendation in that time restraint to require us to go ahead and appoint them.
Okay. Public hearing. Ever say public comments on proposed budget for Wayne County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025? All right, consent agenda, budget amendments. Angie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, we're gonna start with the first budget amendment, number 388. And this is from the Sheriff's Office. This is to reallocate funds to purchase four surveillance cameras for use in high-crime areas of the county. Number 393 is from the Finance Office. This is to move payroll and other expenditures from Hurricane Helene deployment to be able to capture it in the FEMA line item for reimbursement. Number 395 is for the Detention Center. This is to appropriate SCAP grant funds from the Bureau of Justice. Number 397, this is from the Sheriff's Office. This is to reallocate funds to purchase a drone that replaces three other drones that are outdated and need of repair and software updates. This is being done in order to capitalize the purchase.
Is this just for one drone?
Yeah, they're expensive. They're expensive.
I think that's, yeah.
It does appear that it's just one drone.
It's taking the place of three, I think, though, right?
Number 399, this is for services on aging. This is to appropriate funds received from the Peggy Seeger's Endowment Fund in the amount of $1,330 received through the North Carolina Community Foundation. Number 403 is from Solid Waste. This is to reallocate an expense of replacing a pump to a capital line item so that it can be capitalized. Number 404, this is from Services on Aging. This is to appropriate funds received from Duke Energy Progress and ECC Division of Aging and Adult Services to purchase fans for our seniors. Number 408 is from the Department of Social Services. This is to reallocate funds to cover travel for the remainder of the fiscal year. Number 409 from Finance. This is to recognize interest revenue in order to cover additional security service expenditures in the courthouse. Number 413 is from Fleet. We are requesting to use CIP funds to purchase a tire balancer and wheel changer for the Fleet Department. Number 417 is Services on Aging. This is to appropriate donated funds received from miscellaneous supplies. Number 419 is from Facilities. This is to request the use of CIP funds to cover the purchase of a 2019 Chevrolet Dump Truck.
And where are those funds coming from?
From CIP.
And that's a past year model of the truck?
2019.
Is that Facility CIP?
That's the countywide CIP.
Countywide CIP? Okay.
Number 420, this is from the Jetport. This is to recognize additional avgas revenue in order to purchase avgas to get them through the end of the year.
But that's gonna actually make it look like they took a loss. Because they're gonna have gas left over in the tank, right?
It could potentially, when I ran the revenues on that, based on previous years, it did look like they would still look like they have income.
Oh, really?
Yes, mhm. And...
Question, ma'am?
Mhm.
Is this to recognize over-collection of avgas revenue? Is this an increase in revenue?
So our revenues exceeded what was budgeted?
What was budgeted.
But it sold more, they took in more than what was budgeted in, basically. They sold more gas.
So that...
They sold more gas?
Yes, sir.
So this is not actually where they're buying fuel, it's basically where they over-collected or budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And then I laid a budget amendment on your desk. This is the walk-on budget amendment, number 440.
What did I do with you? There it is.
This budget amendment is from the Health Department. This is to realign the healthy beginnings and reducing infant mortality in communities budgeted according to the program's budget realignment to cover a full-time with benefits temporary health education position.
You explained that a little bit, too.
I will be glad to. So in previous years, grant funding was received from United Way and the employee was hired through United Way. Going forward, that person has to be an employee of Wayne County because of the relationship we have with this employee. We cannot pay her as a contract employee. So in order to keep her on, because she is a huge asset to our Health Department in their translation services, we have to bring her on as a temporary employee, which would be full-time, which would entitle her to benefits. This position is funded by grant funds.
So if I'm understanding that, we're just moving it from professional services over to an employee line?
Yes, sir. That's exactly correct.
All right. Is that grant renewable?
It is. We've had it for several years. It's just changing how the flow of money's coming.
Any more questions? Okay, moving along. Mr. Gray. Motion to approve preliminary area plat for Brian's Farm subdivision.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
This is the first of many. I have Brian's Farm, which is a preliminary. This is out on Pine Grove Church Road. It is, if you know where the New Dollar General is, there at La Grange at 70. If you turn there and head down Pine Grove Church Road, it'll be down a little ways on the left. It is sandwiched between Quill Ridge subdivision and Tall Oaks. So it's just a property, a vacant property right between those two subdivisions. There's 23 proposed lots with this. All, the average lot size is about 33,000 square feet, so about three-quarters of an acre. They are proposing connection into the subdivision to the north, so it'll be two access points. Planning Board has reviewed this and does recommend approval. There is on the plat at the end of the cul-de-sac, the main street, there is a rectangular lot that extends on back to the property line, to the Kent property. They are going to be combining that in with the Kent property, that'll be their access for that property in the back. So on the mile law, they've indicated that, that it will be recombined in. So it will not necessarily be a standalone, a really small standalone lot, they will recombine that in.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, yeah, there was, there is a in the subdivision to the south, Tall Oaks, there is an access or a right-of-way that was extended when that subdivision was completed to tie into this property, but the road was never actually put in. So there's a right-of-way, but there's no pavement there. But that area within Tall Oaks is a, it's basically a hole, and it holds water. And so actually several of those lots in Tall Oaks around that connection are filled with water and not developed. And so they are actually not going to connect in with that one because of the issue there with the standing water. As I said, they are gonna connect into the one to the north, but not the one to the south.
So you're saying there's standing water on 68 and 69?
On, um...
On Tall Oaks.
Yeah, on Tall Oaks, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, there wouldn't be any reason to go ahead and incorporate the right-of-way into those two lots, because you can't use them.
Right, right, it's just basically unused land.
No man's land.
That's right.
Any questions, Barry? All right, Hooks Landing.
All right. Hooks Landing is our next one. This is a preliminary as well. This is out Wayne Memorial Drive, if you go all the way out to the county line, excuse me, to the Green County. There's 39 proposed lots there. If you're familiar with the area, it's Ruger Place is on the left as you're heading out. This is across the street, there's some road front lots there across from Ruger Place. They were actually developed as part of Ruger Place. And this is kind of back behind those road front lots. Average lot size is 29,000 square feet, or about 6,600ths of an acre. Planning Board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
How many lots?
This one's 39.
39. Any questions on that? All right, Nobbs Creek.
Nobbs Creek is a preliminary plat. This is out on Lancaster Road, if you're familiar with where Forehand Road comes in at Lancaster. There are some duplex units that sit there. This is kind of back behind those duplex units. Actually, the developer of this property is the same one who developed the duplexes there at Forehand in Lancaster. But they're proposing 17 lots. The average lot size is about 26,000 square feet, or six tenths of an acre. Planning Board does recommend approval.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I need to go back to the previous plat. Wait a minute before you go back here, please. On this one. I see the cul-de-sac and all these above it, what, what's the deal? Is that already established, or...?
No, those will be three new lots. They're gonna have three lots on an access easement that come off the back of that cul-de-sac. The ordinance allows that you can have in a subdivision like this up to three lots off of a private easement, I guess you could say. And so that's what they're proposing to do. They'll put in the easement before the lots are actually recorded, they'll put in that access to get back there. So that'll be done at the final plat stage.
Those lots drop off to nothing, don't they?
Yeah, they are steep.
Looks like...
The homes will be probably on one side.
Right. Why would they not include that into the subdivision?
Probably because of the way, as it narrows, that property narrows back there. And to get the right-of-way back in there all the way through, I think it was difficult for them to get that back there. And with the, with the lay of the land back there as well, I think they were having difficulty.
Would that right-of-way be paved?
The what?
Would the right-of-way be paved?
No, it doesn't necessarily have to, it can be all-weather surface.
Okay.
So it will have to be...
You can put three lots on, it used to be three lots on a...
It'll have to be enough for emergency vehicles to get back there.
Okay. I'm still not understanding why you wouldn't incorporate that right into the subdivision. Probably the cost of extending that street for just three lots would be, wouldn't be... Oh, okay. So in other words, you can put in a gravel road?
Right.
With only three lots? You can serve up to three lots, or tracts of land greater than 10 acres. Based on who's the state law?
Topo lines are, you know, they get drops a bunch.
Yeah.
But I'd have to do a lot of field to...
Exactly.
Yep.
Which one did you put into the law?
Back on the, back on the preceding one, the Hooks Landing, on the front of that plat, I'm just noticing there's a 60-foot right-of-way that goes out to Wayne Memorial Drive. What's that all about? But it's only for that one lot?
Oh, there's already, when those road front lots were done years ago, there was a gap left in there for, and it was just for access for this tract in the back. And so they're putting their road in, of course, further down. And so there's not a need to use this for access, so it'll just be incorporated into that lot. It won't be for access, it'll just be part of that lot. They'll, whoever buys that lot at the end of that cul-de-sac will also buy that piece of property, so it won't be used for access.
Well, the question I have is, why would we not have the dual access to the subdivision by using that 60-foot right-of-way?
In cases like this, DOT will not approve two access points with a subdivision with less than 100 lots.
It's not required unless you have 100 lots. Okay, I'm confused, I apologize. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was a little bit behind there on that.
All right. Ruskin Road Track?
Yeah, Ruskin Road. This is the large one. This one is out, obviously, on Ruskin Road, it is a preliminary plat. This is just north of Sleepy Creek Road. There's 122 proposed lots. If you look at the plat, to the right side of that plat, you kind of see an area that's sort of hatched. That is an area, that is the buffer from a hog lagoon. So that's a 750-foot buffer. That ordinance requires that you have to stay away from those hog lagoons or hog farm buildings. So that's why there's that gap there, that area there. So they did lose quite a few lots there on that east side for that. The average lot size is about 31,000 square feet, or seven tenths of an acre. DOT is actually, because of the close proximity to Sleepy Creek Road, they're actually gonna require a left-turn lane on Sleepy Creek Road that turns onto Ruskin Road. They will be requiring that the developer to put that in. So it will be an off-site turn lane improvement for that. Planning Board has reviewed this and does recommend approval.
Barry, on these lots, do they usually have like a price range of the homes that are gonna be built there, or size of homes?
This, this, I don't know who their builder's gonna be at this point. So until they designate who the builder's gonna be, it's hard to know exactly the size. But I'm guessing it'll probably be typical of what we, what we're seeing now, probably your 16, 17,000 square, or 1,700 square feet in the 250 to 300,000 range, if I had to guess, based on the lot sizes.
Barry, this developer's from Raleigh?
That's right, Barry.
Thank you, y'all are on that.
And this, this county goes with the 48 lots that are coming on Emes Church Road?
That's right.
So there's 48 there, and this one has how many?
22.
22.
And this is all in the Brogdon School?
Who owns that?
The what?
Who owns that?
This property?
Isn't that one that Glenn owns?
He did, yeah, Glenn Thomas owns it, he's selling it to Triangle Land Partners, is what their name?
Since Commissioner Harrell mentioned Raleigh, I mean, it really don't pertain to this subdivision. They said on Channel 5 the other night, that 77% of the people that live in Wade County do not work in Wade County. That's, that's hard to believe. I mean...
People on the road.
Traffic's so bad.
Yeah.
Barry, you see in, in the county right now, is the Dudley area, is that area kind of positioned for potential growth? Because there, you, there's 48 lots now on Emes Church Road, we got this coming around Ruskin.
Potentially. The, the, both of these, that subdivision on Emes Church Road and this one are actually the same developer. So that particular developer may be looking at other areas, you know, like this, or other places in this part of the county. We haven't seen where several different developers are going into this area, but this particular one has been interested. So I think as we... So I think as we see these develop, you know, if they do develop and develop fairly quickly and sell fairly quickly, there may be more interest in this area. We'll just have to wait to see how, you know, what the market looks like and how that happens. But there's a potential there.
Barry, how many homes or lots have we in one year, last year and part of this year, have we got in development?
Oh, I don't have, but probably roughly, um, recorded ones that actually have gone on the ground last year, um, is probably around three hundred, maybe, three or four hundred. Preliminary plats, ones that are proposed, um, probably have quite a few more than that, maybe six hundred or seven. So, but like I've said before, you always see these twice. So you see them, you know, basically it's double. So a lot of these, one you might have seen last year and one you've seen this year, but one was the preliminary, one the final. But we definitely have seen an uptick, um, in subdivisions. But now, May is not unusual to see a number like this. Last May, I think we had Planning Board eight items on the agenda. This year, we had ten items on their agenda, but yet in June, we didn't have anything submitted. So you know what I mean? It's sort of, May always tends to be where they, they gather. So we'll just have to see what the rest of the year brings. But, um, but there definitely has been an uptick in these.
Jason told us Saturday that in April, they did a hundred and twenty planning reviews.
Okay, Baker? Oh, well, the thing about it is, you're still not at the levels of the early two-thousands or the late nineties here. That was probably double what it is right now.
It was, yeah.
I was here.
Yeah, it was. There were some years you had, um, I went back and looked, probably two thousand lots in a year's time period back then. So of course, we're not back to those levels, but we definitely have seen an uptick the past year.
When Bill was developing.
Oh eight was kind of the decline, and prior to oh eight, it was a boom. We're just getting back past those oh-eight levels it looked like on the stats. All of that is tracked, Barry. They track all of that, so you can't tell you off the top of his head, but he can...
Yeah, we've got a spreadsheet.
Thank you, Barry, for answering those questions.
Any more questions? All right, Hunter's Trace, Phase One.
All right, Hunter's Trace. Excuse me. This is actually a final plat. So in this case, you have seen the preliminary before. I think you saw this one last year. This is the final plat for Phase One or Section One. So it's the end of the process. All the improvements are in with this subdivision. This is out on Hooks Road at the intersection of Herman Hooks Road. Herman Hooks kind of dead ends at seven ninety-five, which is just north, northwest of Fremont. There's forty-nine lots with this subdivision. The average lot size is almost nine tenths of an acre or thirty-eight thousand square feet. We do have a built-to-standards letter from DOT with this one, and Planning Board does recommend approval.
Any questions on Hooks Road, Hunter's Trace? All right, Sanchez Estates Mobile Home Park.
All right, Sanchez Estates Mobile Home Park. This is, um, kind of similar, um, I know we don't see this often, mobile home parks. It's similar to a preliminary plat, um, basically, and we do look at it to make sure it complies with our mobile home park standards. It goes to Planning Board and then the U.S. Commissioners for approval. This is at the end, far south end of Imus Church Road, where it comes in at fifty-five and Zion Church Road. This is kind of right in that, um, those intersections there, surrounded by all three of those roads, Zion Church Road, Imus Church Road, and Highway Fifty-five. There is an average lot size here of about thirty thousand square feet or seven, um, tenths of an acre. There is no access on Highway Fifty-five. Those lots that are but fifty-five are reverse frontage, so they will have to access the internal mobile home park street. Their access will come in off of Zion Church Road on the south and Imus Church Road on the east. Planning Board has reviewed this mobile home park plan and does recommend approval.
Are there going to be any requirements as far as the year of the mobile homes? Are there going to be new units?
The year, um, the year mobile home model is nineteen-seventy-six. A mobile home, well, if it comes into this county, if it's moved into this county from another county, it can be no older than nineteen-seventy-six, which is the year that HUD standards went into place or certain HUD standards. That's the only age restriction that we have. Basically, we can't put any additional age restrictions on mobile homes because it wouldn't be in compliance with previous court orders, not with our county, but with, with the state, with other jurisdictions. So seventy-six is really the only year you can apply to mobile homes at this point.
Include single and double wides?
That's right, yes, sir.
But we do have a minimum housing standard, so those units would have to meet certain criteria.
That's right, we do.
Does the person that, that is developing the mobile home, can he have certain requirements on the age of the mobile home, or is it...
Oh, like if they have their own restricted, restricted covenants? Possibly. Whoever owns the mobile home park, you know, I guess they could probably privately, you know, with their own, their own rules, you know, regulate the age. They could do that.
So is this going to be a rental?
It's going to be rental, that's right.
Looks like they designed it in case they wanted to convert it to a subdivision, build a street to pay standards. They could do that. They could get by with a lot smaller lot sizes than they're showing.
Absolutely.
In a park.
The ultimate goal is to sell it off some of those lots.
It leaves that door open for them anyway.
Okay, any more questions? Uh, final plat for Drake Estates.
All right, the last one for today. This is Drake Estates, Section Seven. So this is the last, last section of Drake Estates, so you shouldn't see this one anymore. So again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, you see these over and over. This is, will be the eighth time you've seen this, the first one being the preliminary plat and seven finals. So this is it for this one, end of the process. All improvements are in. This is off of Ridge Road, uh, which comes off of Sand Hill, kind of backs up to, this subdivision backs up to Highway Thirteen. There's twenty-nine lots. Average lot size is about seventeen thousand square feet. They are, we did have a built-to-standards letter from DOT for the street, and Planning Board does recommend approval of this subdivision.
Any questions for Barry? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
All right, moving along to number nineteen. Motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash fifteen, a resolution allowing use of five technologists in this town, Seven Springs.
I'll go ahead and speak on those that they have been vetted by the, um, Inspections Department, both number nineteen and number twenty. They go together. Mr. Lewis submitted them in plenty of time. Paperwork is in order and it, um, there's, there's no issue with the inspection. It's just a formality. But he is doing both nineteen and twenty.
Any questions on that? All right, number twenty-one. Motion to approve the final upset bid for the sale of surplus property owned by the county in Town of Mount Olive, located on one-oh-seven Short Street, Mount Olive.
Good morning. This is a property which you all approved and offered for three thousand dollars at your January twenty-first meeting. So we advertised for upset bids. We actually received two upset bids, and the final bid was four thousand five hundred dollars by Blue Opal Properties. And so we needed to bring the final offer back to you for approval, and then we will send this over to the Town of Mount Olive for their concurrence as well.
Are they planning on building on this lot, or is it just...
I do not know. I believe so, but I, I don't know.
They do a whole lot, though.
No, because of the, well, I told you. Any questions on that? All right, number twenty-two. Motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five dash seventeen, a resolution declaring surplus real property and approving the sale of property located on Piedmont Airline Road in Goldsboro.
And this is a property, it actually adjoins four-twenty-six Piedmont Airline Road, which you all recently approved the sale of, and the same person has come back and, and found another property in the rear of that, um, on Piedmont Airline Road that he would like to purchase from the county and city as well. And he's offered two thousand five hundred dollars. So if you all approve that offer today, we'll notify the adjoining property owners and then advertise for upset bids.
Have we sold four-twenty-six?
We have, mhm. I believe maybe about a month or two ago. And there were no upset bids on that one.
Does this lot have a right of way or an easement to it?
It would have to go through four-twenty-six, would be my guess, but I would have to, it could be that the rear lot was actually owned at some point by the front lot, four-eighteen, and then when we foreclosed on it, it was just the one. So the original access could have been through four, four-eighteen, excuse me.
Any more questions? Moving along to twenty-three. Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the County of Wayne and Wayne County Public Schools for the use of activity buses for the Twenty-Twenty-Five County Summer Intern Program.
And I can speak to this as well. The, um, for our summer internship program, HR has reached out to the school system. They need some buses to transport all the participants and then also the, um, staff that will be joining the participants for June twenty-sixth, July tenth, and July seventeenth, um, for when they need to go off, I guess, out for some of their trips. Um, and so I reached out to the school board attorney, and they just asked that we have an MOU in place, just recognizing our responsibilities. We will reimburse them the cost of the bus driver, and also they've asked all of our participants to sign a waiver, um, for using the bus, similar to a field trip waiver that they've provided us.
How many do we have this year in this program?
Forty.
I don't know.
About forty?
Okay.
The Board of Education approved this MOU yesterday.
So in regards to the number of students that we have, say we have forty, was that comparable to what we had last year?
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, moving along to public comments. County Managers Report, Board of Commissioners Reports, closed session. Do we have a closed session?
Yes, ma'am, just very briefly. And we can take care of that before nine o'clock.
Madam Chair, move, we'll go into closed session.
Motion going closed session.
And that would be to consult with your attorney employed, um, by the public body in order to deserve attorney-client privilege. order to deserve attorney-client privilege.
Good morning. I call the June 3, 2025 Board Meeting to order. The invocation will be Commissioner Tim Hare.
Thank you. At this time, would you go with me in prayer? Father God, we thank you, Lord, again for this amazing and awesome day, Lord, to be here. Father, we thank you for the blessings of this day, Lord, and I ask for blessings and continued grace, Father, upon everyone in this room and those that we know in our hearts, God, across the county that need prayer and touching and healing today wherever they may be. Father, I ask that you please be with us, God, and guide us and grant us the wisdom to conduct the business of Wayne County, God, and to look after and care for our citizens and do the duties that we have been charged to do, Father, for us in Jesus' name, that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Page of Allegiance, Commissioner Gurley.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Grunkler.
I would just need approval of the amendments for your May 20, 2025 meeting. So moved.
Mr. Daughtry.
Okay, thank you for that. With adjustment of the discussion and adjustment of the agenda, I do have one adjustment, which is adding Budget Amendment Number 440, which is to realign healthy beginnings in reducing infant mortality in the communities to the budget. That would be number 440 added to your budget amendments. That's the only adjustment.
Can I entertain a motion to approve the adjusted agenda with Budget Amendment 440?
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. We move along to special presentations. Item number three is a presentation on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan for 2025 by JCPC Chairman Dustin Pittman. He's not here, so we'll move along to item number four, a motion to approve the 2025 Men's Health Week in Wayne County as presented by Vice Chairman Commissioner Bevin Foster.
2025 Men's Health Week in Wayne County. Whereas Men's Health Month is part of the ongoing international effort to educate men, boys, and their families about receiving regular diagnosis, prevention screenings, and living healthier lifestyles. And whereas nationwide life expectancy for the average, for men averages from less than that of women, five years less than that of women. With men experiencing higher rates of health problems such as diabetes, obesity, cancer, health, heart disease, and premature mortality. Whereas Men's Health Network is recognized for their self-esteem, for their esteem in their creations of maintenance and championing over national efforts of officially Distinguished Men's Health Month and Week. And whereas Men's Health Month is a time for the public to recognize the mental and physical needs of men and boys, while encouraging fathers to be role models for their children through preventive health screenings, healthy living, and seeking needed help. Whereas the growing epidemic of suicide and substance abuse requires special efforts to raise awareness of unrecognized and undiagnosed depression and mental stress in boys and men. And whereas the centerpiece of Men's Health Month is National Men's Health Week, a special awareness period passed by Congress and signed into law by President Bill Clinton on May 31, 1994. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 7, I meant June 9 through 15, 2025 as Men's Health Week.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster. Do you entertain a motion to approve the 2025 Men's Health Week in Wayne County? Commissioner Williams.
I just want to make a comment real quick that a lot of times we, you know, we look at people physically and we're saying they out of shape or, or, or they say, oh, this guy's in shape. But you never know what's going on with a person mentally also. So where you can be physically out of shape but mentally in shape and physically in shape but mentally out of shape. And, you know, it's both to have a balance of both, you know what I mean? With healthy eating, you know, men learning to talk. I just, it was so funny, I was watching a video this morning and it said that men, a man may pass away and it'd be like, you know, we never know what was going on with him. And it's like, we never know because men don't talk. You know, he could be suffering through something the whole entire time and not talk about it. So it's important for us to talk, find someone to talk to, get that stress out because it helps with a lot of different things from obesity to cancer to heart attacks, stress. You know, it all helps just being able to talk to someone and get that off. So it's just something to think about.
Good point, Commissioner Foster. Okay.
Okay. Moving along now to the Appointment Committee. Madam Chair, we have several appointments today. We have a motion to appoint Greg Hare as the Fire Commissioner for Little River Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay. Ready?
Additionally, we have a motion to appoint Paul Loot Dahl as the Fire Commissioner for Paitown Fire Service District.
Questioner, well, we can go ahead. Chill. Well, on that Fire District, now it says Service District, which it really probably don't make any difference, but what, which is it now, Chris?
Service District.
Service District.
Okay. And we also have a motion to appoint Melissa Kilpatrick to the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. There we go. Additionally, we have a motion to reappoint Michael Dawson to the Wayne County ABC Board. And a motion to reappoint Matthew Harrison to the Wayne County ABC Board. And lastly, we have a, we recommend to reappoint Barbara Acock to the Jury Commission. We're going to vote on that on June 17. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along to our consent agenda. We would need you looking for approval of our consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Acock for the consent agenda?
Acock, uh?
Yes.
Okay. We can move along now to our public comment period if you would like. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
We do. Mr. Simmons?
Mm-hmm.
How you got it going?
Well, I'll just time, let me get the timer started, please.
What I got, three minutes? Oh, you got four. Four. Get four here.
All right, sir.
First of all, welcome, welcome. We have our town, our town commissioner from Mount Olive, so good to see you here today.
I appreciate you, Antonio, Commissioner. Foster, appreciate you, man. You guys, thank you. So I brought, come here. Come up here. We're here on our tip fees. In the last two years, the county has raised the town amount of tip fees from $20 to $40. Now you're going up five more, just not in all of it, but you raised tip fees. What we're here to ask is you look at us as a municipality. We have a lot of tonnage going on there. So we have an increase. And by you guys all knowing, we're under a moratorium. That means we're not getting much taxes coming in right now. So we had to increase our fund, not for our funds, and our budget to like $180 some thousand just to cover that. We weren't prepared for that. We're trying to see if you guys, so you guys can make this call to lower that to help Mount Olive as a municipality, to help us with those tip fees. Maybe think that maybe it can come down, back down to the 20, where it was better for us. I'm ass here. On some things dealing with our budget. But we're in a very tight situation in Mount Olive. That $180 some thousand is gonna, it's gonna, plus this extra $5 you guys about to go up. It ain't looking good down there. Mayor, you want to speak up?
Just to be direct with Commissioner Simmons to say it, basically, we've gone from, actually, it's 100% increase in the past two years. Whereas $5 may not appear to be much, when you're going through the challenges we've tried, we're going through at this point in time, it is a lot. As we're preparing our budget for this upcoming year, we come to see that, understanding that more and more because of this, it's just one of the other things that's, that's kind of holding us back. So the request is that you would consider our situation and that you would consider either reducing or renegotiating those costs because at this point in time, we, unfortunately, put it this way, we have an influx of personnel, people coming into Mount Olive. Quite a bit of people coming to Mount Olive. And that's causing a lot more of a challenge. And so if you consider doing that, because you've gone, we've gone from 20 to 40, which is 100% increase, and now we're looking at a possible another 15% increase over the next year. And with this, the way it is, it will definitely have a challenge. So we're just asking that you consider that in your budget, you consider that, consider looking at our situation at this point in time and consider giving us some time for you.
One more thing. August, in 2015 was a bad year for the town of Mount Olive. We went in moratorium. People, yeah, still in moratorium, probably can come out for another five years, six years. We're just starting to get things going on track with SOC. Starting to do things right, abide by the laws. And we can't control what happened in our past. So 2015, we had contracts signed. We had Steel Memorial Library built. Somebody signed a contract that was a lifetime contract saying we got to pay the light, the light bill there for lifetime. It increased from $1,000 to $1,500. We never get to see this light bill. We never get to see the light bill. All we want to do is see, wow, is Mount Olive, is Goldsboro paying their light bill? Is Fremont paying their light bill? Is other places paying the light bill? Because we're getting charged $1,500 for a light bill we never see. Maybe it's, is it $700? Or what is the bill? We don't even know the bill.
Hold on, Mr. Simmons. Are we, the four minutes? Yes. We're four minutes is up.
This one, I didn't sign up, okay.
You signed up.
What did I say?
Oh, if you, you signed up also?
I did not sign up.
Oh, you did, okay.
Madam Chair, is it okay if we, if we allow him to speak?
Yes.
Just one question. In reference to what he's speaking of, as far as we, I don't know what the conditions were when the Steel Library was built. But I do know that Ray McDonald, Senior, and Kate Anderson was the clerk when this took place. Now, for whatever reason the agreement was, it's that agreed that the town of Mount Olive would pay the $1,500 per month for electric bill as well as free warden sewer to the library as well. Those things, I'm just saying, and so I would think we would like to see the possibility of negotiating, renegotiating this contract to understand why it was at that point in time and if it's necessary to continue.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Well, if I might say something. I, I don't think that, that the library in Mount Olive should be doing anything different than the other libraries. If our libraries in the city of Goldsboro don't have to pay and the county covers that, I think that we should cover that as well. So definitely there should be some looking into that. I'll ask our attorney to look into that and we'll come back to the board and see what the board suggests pertaining to those, those fees.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you guys. Have a great day.
Thank, thank you, thank you all for coming.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, welcome.
Yes.
Is there anybody else to speak? Then I would recommend you recess until your 9:30 public period.
Okay, we will recess to our 9:30 public period. I, I don't think that, that the library in Mount Olive should be doing anything different than our other libraries. If our libraries in the city of Goldsboro don't have to pay and the county covers that, I think that we should cover that as well. So definitely there should be some looking into that. I'll ask our attorney to look into that and we'll come back to the board and see what the board suggests pertaining to those, those fees.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you guys, have a great day.
Thank, thank you all for coming.
All right, thank you.
There ain't anybody else to speak? Then I would recommend you recess until your nine thirty public hearing.
Okay, we will recess to our nine thirty public hearing. Thank you.
And no one seems to care about that money being lost but me. And I'm just like, why haven't we sat down as a board and said, okay, it's some things that can be cut here? So we are not spending so much money to use those, use those monies other places. And I mean, we, what, it was a washing machine, some, some, some stuff, basic stuff like that could request. But I'm saying overall, we're still gonna lose the same amount of money in these places, if not more, over the next year. Because we haven't made any adjustments. It, it just doesn't make sense to me in a budgeting standpoint, if we're running these supposed to run like a business, enterprise funds, how much money, how, how long do we go, how many years do you go into business with? Negative, ten, twenty, thirty? I, I mean, I don't know any business that could survive on its own funds that way. If, if you got, if I got public funds that I can take and keep dumping into it from the taxpayers and everywhere else, then that's something different. But who, who has that in their, in their business? That's, that's a terrible business model. So I, I have a lot of issues with this budget. I, I don't, I don't agree with it at all. I do like the teacher supplement, I do like some of the things that we did decide to do overall as a board. But I do have a lot of questions, a ton of questions, because it doesn't make sense at the end of the day. I just wanted to state that. I already know there, there's deals that's been made. This board is gonna vote the way it's gonna vote, I'm fine with that, I'm gonna vote the way that I'm gonna vote. But I wanted to make my points stood, that I do not like this budget at all, for the most part. Well, not, not for the most part, it's a lot of things in this budget I don't like. But for the most part, it's a good budget overall, and I thank you for taking the time and the staff and everybody else for doing that. And I'm not coming at anyone, I'm just making my point, taking my, making my point, because I want it to be heard. Because it just doesn't make sense to me. And no one here can give me a valid reason on why. Outside of it's a want for someone, or this or that.
There again, in the budget, you know, it's my proposal, that proposal's passed once it was presented to you, it's your budget, you can do with it as you wish. You had a budget workshop, work session, it can be discussed, it can be adjusted, there was a list of items adjusted, and it can be still adjusted before adoption, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move we adopt the budget as presented with the amendments from our work session that would incorporate a tax rate of point six two five nine.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend that motion. And I'd like to insert the following. Did not know Commissioner Foster was gonna state what he just stated, but it pretty much is in line with what my amendment is, as follows. Move the sheriff's office deputy two percent increase start date from January first, twenty twenty six, to July first, twenty twenty five, which will be six months earlier, at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety seven dollars. Reinsert the Dudley communication tower that improve all communication on the southern end of the county that would give our volunteer fire departments EMS deputies better and safer communication uh, while assisting our citizens at that end of the county, at a cost of two hundred and fifty six thousand, six hundred dollars. And last is reinsert a partial, a partial allocation of the sheriff vehicles uh, for non-patrol vehicles outfitted for service, which is uh, my, my research is approximately two years turnaround time uh, with three pursuit-ready Chevrolet Civiles and six pursuit, uh, pursuit-ready Chevrolet Tahos at a cost of five hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and ninety one dollars and eighty eight cent, which we're looking to change, um, makes, I guess you should say, because we're having such issues with the Dodge Chargers and Durangos. Uh, supplant this in the budget at a total cost of nine hundred and ninety three thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars and eighty eight cent in place of the one million dollar teehanger at the Wayne Executive jet port. That is in the current proposal, although I agree that the jet port plays a role in economic development. I feel that the money is better spent on the needs that will benefit majority of citizens of Wayne County, instead of the possibility of twelve or thirteen in this case, uh, with bathrooms added to it. I would say the staff at the jet port is probably the best in securing grants for projects. Now, this may be an option, I'm not for sure, uh, I think we need to look at that at a later date to try to maintain our, um, tax rate as low as we can, but still operate, or give our citizens the, uh, the protection or ability for our staff to protect our community. So to recap, my amendment is as follows, supplant the two percent raise for sheriff deputies from January first, twenty twenty six, to July first, twenty twenty five, reinsert the, the new Dudley tower site, and reinsert partial sheriff allocation of non-patrol vehicles. All this at a total cost of nine hundred and ninety three thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars and eighty eight cent, in place of the teehanger at a cost of a million dollars, as in the current proposed budget. This will leave approximately six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents to go to general fund for any overruns on current projects, and that is my amendment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have real issue with this amendment to my motion. When we had a budget workshop as such, and we discussed these things, and in those discussions, it was clearly indicated that this board had previously allocated two years of vehicles for the sheriff's department that we had acquired, and those vehicles have, were designated for out years, for future years. We acquired those vehicles, they were here, they were to be saved and be implemented on a rotating basis. We actually used ARP funds to actually pay for those vehicles. So those vehicles had already been acquired. Somehow or another, those vehicles actually have been put into service. We, this board, this commissioner was not aware that they were being put into service, because they were allocated specifically for future years. So now, after those vehicles have now been put into service, we're now asking this board to acquire additional vehicles, over and beyond what we had already acquired. And, and that, I think, is disingenuous. The... We, we in fact had discussed the tower, and we decided that we were going to put that off for another year. So at any rate, I, I just have some issues that we in fact are, are moving around things after we already had our budget, budget work session.
I have responded.
Madam, madam chair.
Let me respond, there's eighteen vehicles that are, uh, set to be surplus through the sheriff's office, there's six on, um, there's six on the, uh, waiting for repairs and or buybacks, uh, that's been, uh, involved in accidents. And, uh, they have, uh, seven being used as spare cars right now. So there is the, uh, eighteen, six is twenty-four, and I think they got either ten and twelve at the time, so it's twenty-three, so we're actually two behind time, and it's actually, I think they're a half a year ahead of time based on the dollar amounts, but the dollar amounts keep rising because of the cost of vehicles and equipment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Aco.
Yes, yes ma'am, Madam Chair. Uh, getting back to the, to the teehanger at the airport, uh, I don't wanna think, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against the, the teehanger. But how, how many planes would that teehanger hold, Mr. Chair?
Twelve.
Twelve, right, what's the, what's the rent gonna be on those hangars?
I think it was indicated around three fifty to three seventy-five.
All right, and how many planes again?
Twelve.
All right, somebody do a little bit of math for me here. How long will it take for us to rent a hangar for three fifty, four hundred dollars, uh, twelve of them? How, how long will it take us to get that million dollars back?
Sixteen, eighteen years.
Okay, well by then, you're gonna have to spend money on the teehangers, 'cause they're gonna be sixteen, eighteen years. Oh, uh, my, my problem is that we're not charging enough rent on, on the, on the teehangers, I mean, and, and I've, I've never had an airplane, never rode in many of them, uh, but I, I just think that the rent is too low on those teehangers. I mean, I've got a mini store to business, and I can rent you a ten, about thirty, storage unit for ninety-five dollars, and, and you can't even put a fifty-nine Cadillac in there, I mean, you, I did, it just don't, it just don't add up to me to spend a million dollars on something that you probably will never get the money back for at the, at the rate of the, of the rent.
Well, again, uh, Madam Chair, the teehangers have been a project that has been put off for decades. We have not built any teehangers at our airport in over twenty years. For an airport or a jet port to grow and to provide that service, you, just like anything else, you constantly have to improve the facilities. This year was the year that, uh, the Jet Port Commission had been assured that this would be in the budget. We all had, uh, agreed when we put the pad in, we built the pad some nine years ago for the teehanger. So the pad, uh, that, that investment has already been made, it is there. Number, uh, the next thing I wanna point out is that we actually had private individuals that wanted to build the teehanger, and the county said, no, we wanted to acquire and convert our jet port over to where the county owned all the properties there. All the hangars would be owned by the county. We did not want private entities actually owning any of the hangars. Now, if we're not going to open it up for private industry to come in and private investors to build and expand the jet port, and the county's taking on that responsibility, then it comes to time that you have to provide that improvement. That's number one. I, I'm sorry, that's probably number five. But lastly, we in fact had already acquired or provided a method to actually build this at the least expensive method by procuring this construction through W C D A. W C D A has agreed that they will actually build the hangar, which saves greatly on it. And the price of steel is not going to go down. We have negotiated the very best price that we could possibly get to have this hangar constructed. In addition to the rent, uh, you also have the tax revenue that is generated from those planes that are based here in Wayne County. So it's not only the revenue that you're generating from the rent, it's also for the planes that are actually housed here. So there is additional revenue that is generated from that, as well as the servicing, as well as the, the ab gas that, that goes into those planes that are acquired and purchased through our jet port. So on one hand, we want to have the jet port be self-sustaining, but we need to provide the vehicle for it to become self-sustaining, which means that you have to expand this, the facilities there, so you bring more planes and more activity to the jet port. I will.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I missed Foster first.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Uh, one, first and foremost, I would say this. What's more important? For county-wise, 'cause we all said we're here to make decisions best for the entire county, what's most important for the county? If, if you can tell me the jet hangars are the most important for the county, I'll vote for it. If you can give me logical reasons why that's the best for the county, I'll vote for it. I don't see any. Secondly, you said that, the tax revenue. Do we have twelve individuals right now, or from anywhere, or from Wayne County, that bought twelve new planes that are coming here to add on tax value, or is it gonna be twelve people that's already here paying those, that's gonna move into the new hangars? So that tax value wouldn't change. I don't see twelve new planes coming in. Maybe, I just don't. So that's, that's, that's my thing, it's doing what's best for the most amount of people with that million dollars. And regardless of stuff that was said in the past, I wasn't part of those boards that I know of that said any of those things about the, which, I just wasn't, I don't know who here was, but it could've been bad deals made back then, it could've been bad things stated back then. Sometimes there are times for change, you know what I'm saying? And right now, I think we need to do what's most, what can most benefit the most amount of people with that million dollars, and that's just it. If, if, if grant money comes up, or something comes up, and we can build those teehangers, fine. But still, how does that money best benefit the citizens of Wayne County? In this budget? Regardless of what was told to someone from a past board or whatever, we'll do this, or promised to the jet port board or whatever, I didn't promise it. But I did promise the citizens of Wayne County that I would make decisions that benefited the entire county and not just a select group of people, and I think we all did that.
Commissioner Aco.
What kind of weight is we got for teehangers now? Does anybody know?
I, there is a list. I, I can tell you, there are no teehangers in east of Raleigh that are available. And people are, that own aircraft are looking for teehangers to hang. And, and they will be coming from outside the county. These are not planes that are already based here in Wayne County. So it is a way to actually improve the, the jet port and bring additional planes here to our, our jet port. And it grows. That is the only way you grow at, 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 at a jet port. If not, then you're leaving it to what facilities you currently have.
Madam Chair, I just want to make, make one thing clear, I've never voted against anything at the jet port. I've always voted to, uh, to, um, I've always voted to, uh, fund the, um, percentage that the county was due over and above grants. And like I said, I think they're probably one of the best departments that is affiliated with the county in getting grants. I would, uh, I like the idea of, of going for grants, as I've said earlier. Uh, and I don't think we'd have an issue with, uh, funding the, uh, the, the county's matching part of that. But that being said, Madam Chair, I'd ask that we vote on the amendment, and if you'd like me to, to state that again, I will.
Madam Chair, I would like to respond to that if I could. First of all, you cannot get grant monies to build teehangers, it's not available. They look to the county, the authority that owns and operates the jet port, to actually make that investment. Number one. Number two, do recognize that this jet port has brought in almost fifteen million dollars worth of investment for this jet port, through grants, through grants. They are now asking that the county simply step up and do what was committed years ago and actually build the teehanger. I, I'm just, I, I am just bewildered that we are now in this discussion, but needless to say.
I would just say, say this, even with the fifteen million dollars in grants, over the past five years that I've been here, I think we've lost, uh, over two million dollars out there, easily at the jet port. So that's still, you know what I mean, like, how, how's that beneficial to the, to the entire public of Wayne County? So I'm, I'm ready to vote on the amendment if.
Can I say one?
Yes.
I forgot two items that we added back in when I was going through from your last budget work session. We did increase the school capital, uh, small project capital from two million to two point five million. Uh, and also, we added back the, uh, foreign language interpreter at a half a year. But those were two items I forgot to mention.
Madam Chair, my.
You can get back to talking.
Uh, Commissioner Hare.
Thank you. Um, so I have one statement and a question. I am concerned that we had two budget work sessions, and we did not have this discussion during any of our budget work sessions. Other than obviously Commissioner Foster. But I didn't hear this from any other commissioners about their concerns about this. That kinda bothers me, 'cause I like to be prepared on knowing what I'm voting on. The other question I have is about the vehicles. Placing orders for vehicles, it takes a while to get them. Right, so when you place an order, during COVID, we placed an order for vehicles and we never got them. If you're, if you're adding in five hundred thousand dollars for vehicles, at what point in time would that be paid? Right, is that something that has to be accounted for in this budget year? Or will the delivery of those vehicles be so late that it actually affects the next budget year?
It would be in this budget year.
Yes, sir. Probably after Christmas into January.
Possibly. Depends on when, who they talk to and the order, and how many they have in hand when they order.
Right.
Lot of variables there, but it could, could be this fall.
Andrew, I've got a parliamentary procedure question.
Mm-hmm.
For commissioners with how we operate, we do not require seconds.
You do not.
Do not.
So what you would need to do, if, if, continue your debate, I'm not saying you have to stop, but you need to vote on the amendment, and then if the amendment were to pass, then that becomes the new substantive motion that you'd also need to vote on, but I'm not trying to end debate, that's answering that question.
Thank you for clarification.
There was a discussion at the last meeting, we just didn't get into it because it was pretty much shut down a little bit to a point, so I just, I mean, and I, like I said, I didn't have all my homework done, I worked on this over the weekend, a lot of part of the week, uh, to make sure I had my figures correct, uh, to see where to get the money at, but it actually makes sense. I've talked to several people and that listen to the meetings, and the common denominator was, why are we spending that on a teehanger? Now, you know, I defended it to a point, uh, I would be more inclined, far as, uh, far as corporate hangars, I guess, would be more of the, uh, economic development side of it. But like I said before, I'm not against the jet port, and I think anybody on this board realizes that I'm not. I'm just, at this time, I think it's the best spent, because I think we're gonna back ourselves in a corner, um, with, uh, with cars especially. But I think the, uh, the need for the, uh, tower in Dudley has always been a, an issue with, with, um, with, uh, our communication in that area, and for, like I said, the fire service, uh, EMS and our law enforcement, I think it's in the best interest to go ahead and move forward with that as well. And I said, I stated this at the last meeting, I was in favor of, uh, of, um, increasing, uh, doing a two percent increase from our, for our sheriff deputies, uh, six months earlier, uh, as, uh, July first. So that's my, that's my statement, and.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend the amendment. Is that proper? I am greatly concerned that we would have budget sessions and not have this discussion at that time, but all of a sudden, we come to the point of a vote and actually have this bombshell thrown out here to take away one of the items to fund another, other items. So basically, we have had this discussion, we all came to somewhat of a gentleman's agreement that we had asked our county manager to produce the numbers and make his recommendation based upon our changes. And now all of a sudden, we get, all of a sudden, well, let's just take away one of those items and fund my items. And that's what we're doing here.
This is not my.
That's what, exactly what we're doing. And in addition to that, in addition to that, these cars that you're adding, we had already funded those vehicles prior to this, using ARP monies. So we're going to take all of those vehicles that we acquired for two years, implement those, and now we're adding additional vehicles. At what end will we provide vehicles for our sheriff's department? Is there any check or balance there?
I don't think there's ever an end in this part that we're gonna have.
But, but wait a minute, I, I'm sorry, I've got the floor.
Okay, all right. You asked a question.
I, I see no way to resolve this in that we have, in essence, already got ahead of ourselves, based upon commitments that I had from my fellow board members. We've already had W C D A execute a contract to build the teehanger, based upon these commitments. So with that in mind, I would like to amend my motion, uh, amend your amendment by increasing the tax values, the tax rate to point six three, point six three, to accommodate these costs, and the balance to come from, fund balance, as we had discussed earlier. Point six three would be the tax rate.
So just to clarify, so you would raise it to point six three, and then include the teehangers in the budget?
That's correct.
Does everybody, is that clear to everybody?
Yeah, this is clear.
That is the amendment to the amendment.
That's the second order amendment, amendment that we would vote on.
You would have to address that one first.
Madam Chair, I just wanna speak on that amendment. I think that's the most selfish, unfair thing to ask all the citizens of Wayne County to pay taxes on something that's gonna benefit twelve people that may not even be from this county. According to you, according to those that said that, uh, the people all over eastern North Carolina need hangars. I think that's selfish, and I think that's ridiculous. To even consider that as a board, or, or just anything, to consider that, is just ridiculous. But we can vote on it whenever everybody's ready.
I gotta, I gotta comment on this. First off, we had this discussion, but we had some options based on to possibly do part of this, and you took somebody's head off about it, about the way to fund it. Number one. Number two, you're telling me that the W C D A has entered into a contract to build these hangars prior to us passing this budget, is that correct?
They have entered into an agreement that they will do it based upon this budget.
But they've not, so they've not signed a contract, they've not entered into a contract.
They have agreed to it, yes.
But they have not, they've signed a document?
They have agreed to it.
They've agreed to it, but they've not signed.
That is correct, okay.
So, as I said earlier, I spoke on this at the last meeting, but, I mean, it was obvious that, you know, and again, I didn't have my homework, uh, straight up to see exactly what it done, I just kinda looked through it to see the possibility of trying to keep the tax rate down, and hopefully looking at pushing the teehanger off, down the road, when we could, um, afford it, I guess, at a better time, but.
Madam Chair, one more thing, and I apologize for that. I mean, even just say, we would've had ten citizens come in here, um, speak today on the budget, we still had a right to change from there. So changing things today doesn't matter, you know what I mean? We have up until the time of, the budget is due to make changes. So whenever those changes are made, they're just made.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I want to apologize to this board, because I did, I missed one of those budget meetings, because I had a daughter's appointment. So part of what is being discussed today, uh, I, I was not in on, and that's, that's not y'all's fault, but it was a daughter's appointment that I could not change. And, uh, you know, I, I know I got an obligation to be involved with the budget and all, but I was, I was just caught between a rock and a hard place that day. So one of the budget, the budget sessions, I was not present at.
Madam Chair, let me speak on that. That's another reason that I didn't push forward to try and, uh, look at things, because Commissioner Aco was not here to voice his opinion. It could've been the same outcome, or it could've been a different outcome, based on what the, uh, the sections that went back, the county manager and finance or budget team, uh, adjusted. So I ask that we vote on, on Mr. Daughtry's motion.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I could clarify, to make sure. Madam, Madam Chair, if I could clarify to make sure we understand my amendment to the amendment. That is that the tax rate would be point six three. It would include all of the items of Commissioner Gurley's proposal. And it also would include the T hangar. So it includes all those additions.
And how much is that, uh, how much is that half, is actually four tenths? Four tenths of a cent, right? How much does that bring in? Say again?
Five hundred forty thousand, three hundred eighty dollars.
That's what that point four cent up bring in? So we would come out of pocket another four hundred sixty thousand?
Seven hundred and seventy thou, seven hundred and seventy seven thousand.
Say again?
No, scratch that.
No, a million dollars would be four hundred.
I was thinking about a penny. Four hundred and seven? Four hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Which would come from fund balance.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Harold.
If I may, if this is correct by parliamentary procedure, if not, please correct me. I'm not prepared to vote on this today at the last minute. May it be in front of me? So I make a motion that we table this until the seventeenth of June and give Chip and Angie and the staff an opportunity to go back and actually look at these proposed amendments and to see if what we're discussing here can be funded and what the actual fiscal impact is going to be.
Madam Chair.
So if, if you did that, then that would take precedence. That would be the new procedural motion. You would have to resolve the table issue before you address any of the amendments.
I would, I would ask that we go ahead and, uh, res- uh, vote, resolve the issues. Uh, and I would ask you, you know, personally, a couple of weeks ago, I asked for the same thing and you said no. So I would ask that you respect that same no that you said then when I asked for time in this. And I had to make a quick decision when I asked for time to, to do some research and everything. You said no, correct? So I ask for that same thing right now for us to go on and vote on the motions that are before us.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Williams.
As an elected representative of District Two on the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, it is my duty to ensure that every community in our county is treated with fairness, dignity and equity. Unfortunately, I cannot support this recommended budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty six because it fails to meet those standards, particularly for the residents in District Two. The Dudley and Marmack areas in my district continue to face longstanding inequities, especially in access to basic infrastructure and reliable transportation. The lack of public transit limits access to employment, education and essential services. Yet again, this budget offers no meaningful solutions to address those needs. Dudley is a community where forty-two point eleven percent of residents are black or African American. And the median income is just thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. These are not just numbers. They reflect the real persistent challenges faced by families who have historically been underserved. Addressing these disparities should be a priority in any responsible county budget. One of the most impactful forward-thinking, excuse me, proposals I put forward was the creation of a virtual library for Wayne County modeled after the national recognized bibliotech system in San Antonio, Texas. This digital library would give residents access to thousands of eBooks, audiobooks, educational databases, job training tools and Wi-Fi enabled devices. It would help bridge the digital divide, not just for District Two, but for anyone in Wayne County who lacks access to 21st century learning resources. This initiative was more than just a proposal. It was a practical, scalable solution to advance digital equity and modernize how we deliver public services. It would cost significantly less than building a traditional library. And it is based on a proven success in our communities. Yet despite its potential and the board's earlier approval of this concept, my request to allocate five hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget to fund the project was not supported. Rejecting this initiative is more than a missed opportunity for my district. It is a delay in progress for the entire county. As leaders, we cannot afford to make decisions based solely on familiarity or comfort. We must be willing to invest where the future demands, especially in communities that have been overlooked for too long. I remain committed to advocating for solutions and uplift our residents. I will continue working to build coalitions and push for smart, equitable investments. One forward-thinking initiative at a time. Wayne County's future depends on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any more comments?
So what's before you right now is the motion to table and the discussion on the budget until, uh, June seventeenth.
Okay.
This is.
Motion to table until June seventeenth.
Vote on current items as public hearing.
Yeah, this is the motion to table. This isn't the, to approve the budget.
So we're voting on June seventeenth, table the budget.
So we're voting to not, not, um, not take any action today. We'll wait until the seventeenth.
So that motion failed to, um, is Mr. Daughtry's, uh, motion regarding the point sixty-three tax rate, inclusion of the T hangers and then all of the items that Mr. Gurley previously stated. That would be the next motion that needs to be considered.
Amendment, the second amendment.
The second amendment, correct.
Could you repeat that again, Andrew?
It would be the tax rate at sixty-three cents, inclusion of the T hangers, six month salary of Wayne County Sheriff's Office, the tower in Dudley, partial, um, funding of non-sheriff's vehicles and the rest of fund balance.
So this would increase the tax rate to cover these added.
Just the, there's someone, just the, um, partial of the.
Partial of the T hangar.
Yeah.
As of the T hangar.
The next motion if we get to.
Would be yours.
Exactly. It's going to, that's already covered if we.
Can you erase my vote?
Because this is actually adding, taking four sixty-ish out of fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
But let me go through this again before I vote. This is Mr. Daughtry, Commissioner Daughtry's raising the tax rate to point six three.
Correct.
And then we take the remainder of coming up short from fund balance. Is that correct?
Correct. For the T hangers and then all of the items that.
For all the items of Commissioner Gurley.
The, all the items of Commissioner Gurley is included in the, in the lower tax rate. It's point six two five. What we're voting on right now is to add the T hangar back at a rate, increase the rate by four tenths to point six three and four hundred and sixty-ish thousand dollars coming out of fund balance to, to clear out the, uh, T hangar.
Correct.
Does everybody understand that?
Yep.
So that has failed. So then the next one would be Mr. Gurley's original amendment, which would be a point six two five nine tax rate. Push up the sal, the, um, salaries of Wayne County Sheriff's Office by six months. The tower in Dudley, partial funding of the sheriff's vehicles.
Well, actually, it would fund the, uh, it would fund nine vehicles.
Nine vehicles, correct.
Fully.
And from my understanding of that and clarification, if this vote fails, then we then would go to the seventeenth.
When you have a motion, you had an original motion on.
Oh, I did, oh.
Yeah, so we would have to address that first. When I, when I said partial funding, I, I meant a partial.
Allocation of the color.
Years allocation. That's what I meant by.
A years allocate, an additional years allocation.
This is a, a partial of the years allocation, nine vehicles.
Okay.
So this is for Commissioner Gurley's.
Correct.
And then leave the tax rate at point six two five nine. Is that correct?
Yes.
But no.
And removal of the T hangers.
T hangers.
Correct.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So that amendment has passed four to three. So that makes Mr., um, Commissioner Daughtry's original motion null and this becomes the new substantive motion. So you would need to take another vote on this as well.
Do we vote on this again?
Correct, because this is the new substantive motion. And that's a point six two five nine tax rate, push up the salaries by six months, tower in Dudley, nine sheriff's vehicles and then removal of the T hangers from the budget. And this would approve the budget for twenty five, twenty six.
Any questions on that?
That passed five to two, so your budget is now adopted.
Thank you. It goes, um, I guess it's county manager's report time. This goes to show you the importance, the job, I mean, difficult decisions have to be made and you're always criticized and it's a, to show you how appreciative I am of the work that you do and the difficulty with which you have to do it. There's always decisions, there's always cuts, there's always things that you have to fund and it's, it's difficult to do it and provide a, a decent tax rate. Also, I want to remind you of our meeting tomorrow, uh, NCACC District Meeting in Snow Hill. If any of you want to ride with me, we'll be leaving, uh, meet up here about eleven o'clock and you're welcome to come. I already told them we were about five or six that we'd be showing, so. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, board. This is, this has been an interesting budget meeting. Good comments, good feedback and seems that everybody done their homework. All right. Do we go to the county manager?
Committee, committee comments, yeah, commissioner comments.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Okay, so you, okay. All right, Commissioner Foster?
Um, what a heavy decision. Uh, I did not like the tax increase at all. I wanted to try to keep the taxes the same. But, uh, we're trying to get everything done that I feel like was important and was best for the county. We, we had to make a small adjustment in the tax rate. And for that, I do apologize to all the citizens that didn't want the taxes to go up at all. But I felt like it was something that had to be done. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Harold?
No comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Gurley?
No comment.
Commissioner Acoff?
Uh, no, no comment, but I do, I wanted to commend, uh, Chip and the staff for working on this. It's very difficult. And, uh, for him to get, you know, we like to get a unanimous vote on the budget, but sometimes it's just, uh, it's unavoidable. But I do want to put me and Chip and, and the staff for all the time and effort that they put into this budget. You know, there's, there's seven of us sitting up here to make the final decision. And, uh, I hope that we've made the, the right decision. But, you know, all of us is entitled to our, to our opinions. And I certainly don't hold anything against any of the other commissioners for the way they voted. But, uh, I had to vote my conscience today. Uh, and like I say, I apologize again for missing one of the budget meetings. And Chip, I cannot go tomorrow because I got another daughter's appointment tomorrow. Thank you, madam.
Commissioner Daughtry?
You know, this job is not easy, that's for sure. But whether it's working on budgets or any issue with the county, you generally try to have discussions with your fellow commissioners and get their commitment and their word to actually, uh, move your project along. It's just very dis- disheartening when you come down to the point of the actual vote and see that those commitments are not upheld. That said, I also want to point out that in this process, I have worked diligently to find the revenue to offset some of my projects. And I've done so. And yet come to the point of decision day to find that those are all dismissed out of hand. And instead, we're substituting additional items to offset some of the things that I was standing for. So it's very disheartening. But again, as it's been pointed out, votes are taken and no one needs to be holding grudges from votes. But it is very disheartening when you try to work to improve your county and improve those facilities within your county. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yes. I think what the community saw today was politics at its best. This is chess, not checkers. You never know what's going to happen when it comes to decision-making here. I'm accustomed to not getting what I need. Today, we see some of my colleagues that haven't gotten what they needed. And so I, I think they are on the other side of the tracks today. It's unfortunate. But again, this is what we signed up for and I guess we'll be okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say one more quick thing. I think in some of the discussions and some of the things that, um, it's just as being politicians and being voted into these seats by the public, is that we get confused with I. We get confused with my. I think those are words that we should never use when it comes to sitting at this table because it's not about any of us at this table as individuals. It's about the communities that we serve and then the entire community as a whole. And too many times we get in, in, in our selfish ways of wanting, I want this or I want that. And we make deals behind the scenes. And those deals shouldn't be made because everything should be discussed at these, at this table as a whole for everybody to have the same amount of information moving forward. But a lot of times that doesn't happen because it's a, I'll give you this if you give me that. You know, we took an ethics class, you know, I think a week or two ago. And it's just a lot of that stuff, you know, over the years of having to take those classes, being in politics, it's like, you know, there's certain, certain ways that things should happen. No board should really be voting all together all the time. We shouldn't always be in agreement. And it's perfectly okay to not be in agreement, you know? But those deals and stuff shouldn't be had a lot of times. It should just come to this table and we should vote as, as men and women that care about this, this, this county as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one thing to say. Uh, just for clarity, uh, say the least, I didn't contact a single person on this board with what I, with what I've come forth with today. I did my own homework. I did my own part. I've got my own convictions of what I think is best. I am pro emergency services where that affects every, all hundred and thirty thousand-ish people in this county. Uh, so my, my decision today or my proposal today was based only on that. Like I said, and I think everyone of you can say I didn't call it, not one of you get you to, to try to coerce you into getting your vote. You voted your own. to coerce you into getting your vote, you voted your own convictions today of what you thought was best, and uh, like I said before, I am pro jet port, but at this time, I feel like it's better for us to uh push this forward to try to keep the tax rate as low as possible, thank you, madam.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, my story is, this was an interesting voting session on the budget, and I want to emphasize again, great job, Mr. and manager, Chip Crump, Angie and the rest of the staff. Looking at some of the things and listening to my constituents, um, what they were wanting, and one big concern was a tax increase and concerns about their property values and like Commissioner Gurley, I've done some homework as well, I looked at my tax rate, and one of the things that I looked at was my home went up a hundred and eight thousand dollars from last year, which was a big hit, also got a, a email from the rest of you that we were in cahoots about destroying farmland, which is truly incorrect, because Commissioner Acoch and I own farmland, and we both fave because we own Century One Hundred Farms, so I want to clarify on that, this board is not trying to destroy farmland, we're trying to preserve it, but each person that owns farmland, they have the right to do with their land as they please, it's hard to sign my laws, I hate to see farmland, I've got some that's over a hundred and seventy homes building on farmland right in front of me, out my front window, and it really bothers me to see this beautiful farmland being in the subdivisions, but that, that's their right, and I want the people to understand that we are pro farmland. I listened to the different ones specifying, and I'm a big opponent of the airport because I see what value it does bring to us, the community, but the money is an object, there's only so much money to distribute, so we have to break it down, look at our line items, look at our budget, where is the money at this time most useful for our community? And I think the board has voted and done their homework, and I thank Commissioner Gurley for doing very good homework on his and Commissioner Foster, they brought up good points, Commissioner Daughtry's brought up good points, but at the end of the day, we have to vote where our, where we feel like's the best way to use our money, and I just want to thank the board for bringing up all these good points, and, and I had to ask Andrew, you know, where I was at on some of these things, because it was getting very confusing, but I think we all voted from where we thought was the best, and thank you for that, and I adjourn the meeting, if at least there's any other comments.